This meeting of the Cedarburg Education Board, 2014. This meeting has been noticed in the school district as well as the new traffic and Milwaukee drunk central. So I would like to move on to the panel and resolutions and recommendations.
Thank you. This is a long list, everybody, but it's good news. Congratulations to the following class of 2014 students who have earned some accolades. Haley Abbott, Emma Anderson, Ryan Anderson, Jacob Antonio, Sidney Bartos, Danielle Blank, Joe Chapman, Joseph Christensen, Katherine Sepulka, Joe Drebat, Nicholas Farrell, Zachary Phillips, Emma Fisher, Nicholas Gall, Sean Galokey, Michael Glomsky, Sophia Gex, Haley Daren, Lindsay Daren, Zachary Haug, Colin Hackbar, Grace Hagerman, Jonah Hassanauer, Lori Kordick, Courtney Janza, Lucas Kastner, Troy Kimmel, William Cobden, Abigail Prince, Adam Coburn, Celesta Hay, Dylan Massar, Nina Maddie, Lindsay McLaughlin, William Holter, Jenon Rotek, Ryan Noel, Riley Neville, Megan Olson, Mary Phillips, Emma Pigeon, Sarah Petrie, Erica Proll, Mitchell Ramouda, Vincent Rusecka, Joseph Sackmar, Andrew Saludis, Chase Sateman, Michael Schubert, Rachel Schuler, Leah Sibella, Jacob Cheats, Joshua Short, Saban Cindy, Matthew Simon, Tobias Steckel, Rachel Stern, Angela Stroback, Nicholas Sweetland, Jennifer Tornin, Kyle Water, Elizabeth Wilkinson, Megan Wiesa, and Kelly Wolner. Now another list, congratulations to the following seniors achieving 30 or higher on the ACP score. Scoring 30, Jacob Antonio, Danny Bauer, Carl Coles, Anthony Douglas, Emma Fisher, Joseph Guyot, Zach Haug, Grace Hagerman, Courtney Janza, Bennett Jenkins, Lucas Kastner, Rachel Kemp, Haley Leonard, Dylan Massar, Michael Schulitz, Colin Mulcahy, Mary Phillips, Vincent Rusecka, Leah Sebel, Brian Shutterton, Joshua Short, and Kelly Wolners. Scoring 31, Nathan Dunphy, Sean Galokey, Trevor Glum, Melina Hogenson, William Cobden, Lindsay McLaughlin, Alex Niklefelder, Alexander Schulte, Matthew Simon, Jacob Stalsberg, Christian Stevenson, Matthew Wamser. Scoring 32, Daniel Blank, Joseph Christensen, Michael Glomsky, Colin Hackbar, Nina Maddie, Sarah Petrie, Erica Proll, Justin Seegy, and Jennifer Tornin. Scoring higher than 33, Haley Abbott, Zachary Phillips, Haley Daren, Lindsay Daren, Adam Coburn, Celesta Hay, Jenon Rotek, Rachel Stern, Riley Neville, Angela Stroback. Scoring 34, Sophia Gex, Kyle Water, Elizabeth Wilkinson. Scoring 35, Troy Kimmel. And scoring a perfect 36 was Willie Holter and Andrew Saludis. Lesson one, 10% of all test takers earn the top score of 36. It's the first time in school history that we've had more than one student with a perfect score. The class of 15, next year's class already has two students that have achieved this honor. Nick Mo and Nick, I'm sorry, Nikki Mo and Nick Rosser. Congratulations to all. Congratulations to the class of 2014, Bell Victorian Will Holter and Salutarian Andrew Saludis. Congratulations to the following national merit recognitions. Senior Troy Kimmel, Will Holter, Andrew Saludis being named finalist. Haley Abbott as a semi-finalist, and Sophia Gex, Colin Hackbar, Rachel Stern, and Matthew Wamser as commended students. Congratulations to the following 2013 All-Conference Soccer selections, Nikki Albert and Kylie Marks. Honorable mention, congratulations to Isabella Chavignani, Becky Onen, and Alexis Brewer. Congratulations to the following boys golf All-Conference selections. PJ Clemmons, first team. Steven Young, second team. Dean Reiner, second team. Jack Dorward, honorable mention, and Peter Dorward, honorable mention. Congratulations to PJ Clemmons being named Conference Player of the Year. Congratulations also to Evan Hughes and Jeff Van Stratten being named Conference Coaches of the Year. Congratulations to the following boys track athletes. Kyle Polton as conference champion in the shot put. State qualifiers Joshua Short in the 1600 meter run, and Jack O'Neal in the 3200 meter run. Congratulations to the following girls track athletes. Sidney Roberts as conference champion in the high jump, and Ella Polton as conference champion in the 110 meter hurdles. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four, is there anyone that would like to address the Board of Education? Show your hand. Okay. Just going to read a public comment disclaimer. In the past, the State Department General issued guidance on how governmental bodies such as school boards should conduct the public comment portions of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist governmental bodies in avoiding violation of the state's open meetings laws. The essence of the guidance is that unless the topic being brought to the board by the public is listed on the meeting's agenda, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for this guidance is not to limit open discussion, but rather to ensure that all interested parties have equal opportunity to participate in discussions with the full school board. We on the school board encourage community input, and we want to hear from you, our constituents. However, we also take the state's open meeting laws seriously, and we will follow the guidance that's outlined by the State Department General. Therefore, if an item is listed on tonight's agenda, open dialogue may occur between the individual from the public and the board members. If it is not listed, the board will be limited to listening only and not be able to respond to comments and questions. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you want to have discussion regarding the topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda. As always, you are also encouraged to discuss the issue with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside of the meeting setting. Please make your comments to the board and to any individuals in the audience. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with courtesy and respect that you would like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. As a reminder, this meeting is being videotaped and it's going to be broadcast on YouTube. So, anyone may stand up if they'd like to. Again, your name and address, please.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Kim McGuire. I live at 359 West Hornup Lane, Grafton. And I am a Cedarburg taxpayer for schools, Grafton, or Village of Grafton. I wanted to talk tonight and mention about the Smarter Balance Assessment tests. I have concerns about the amount of time students will be spending on testing. According to what I've read, which comes from the Smarter Balance Assessment pages, which encompass pages 12 through 15, the system components for the testing talk about summative assessments for the accountability as students have been taking their standards and curriculum during the school year. The report states that 12 weeks prior to the end of the school year, testing can begin, which means testing can begin in March, April, May, go into June, or 12 weeks before the end of school, so roughly the end of March, beginning of April, which then leads you to the thought that if students are being tested in March, beginning of April, students who get a chance to be tested closer to the end of the school year have more time with the curriculum. So I'm not sure where Cedarburg is on that 12 weeks. Are you planning on 12 weeks, taking a look within that timeframe as to when you're going to be testing students? According to the information given here, it also states that grades three through eight and grade 11 are going to be taking the summative test. Nine and seven can take tests if you and the district decide that you want to have those tests. But when we talk about those tests, we also talk that they're based in performance tests and end-of-the-year assessment tests. And according to what's stated here, the students would be taking for the performance test, one task in reading, one task in writing, and two in mathematics annually. And they would be, they would probably take between one and two class periods. This is for math and English Language Arts. So you're looking at one writing, two math, one reading, that's four, which would take up to one to two class periods to complete the test. Then there's also the end-of-the-year comprehensive assessment, and in that, that test would consist of 40 to 65 questions per content area presented within a computer adaptive assessment, which would include selective responses, constructive responses, and technology and hand cycles. So you have both of those tests going on at the end of the year, and that's just the two areas. Now take a look at if you have B.T. students, if you have your art, your music, your social studies, your science, your language, those areas I'm sure also have an end-of-the-year test. Right now, Common Core is only English Language Arts and Math. Science and Social Studies will be added, and I wonder if Science and Social Studies will also have the components of the performance test and the end-of-the-year. That's a lot of time spent on testing and not on instruction. So there's a concern with Smarter Balance testing time for me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim McGuire, and I live at the same address, the previous speaker. I was going to just read a short sentence or two from a publication that dates back August 10th. It's from the consulting company Achieve, which is a national consulting company that was kind of organized to put together the beginnings of Common Core and then organize standards and testing and everything else. It is, you can tell it was written by a consulting company because there's about every consultant buzzword known to mankind in there, so I won't bother reading it all, obviously. But it says here, we should have a, that in order to implement from the standards to the curriculum to the testing, we should have a strategic implementation team. I don't know if anybody from Cedarburg was on that team for the state, but I'm going to assume that unless I can be, to be correct. The team should be cross-cutting with representatives from the state, Department of Education, higher education, and the governor's office. The team should include policy, budget, communication experts. The team should also include representation from districts and schools, which I guess would be a few people, including teachers, administrators, and content experts. With a short reference to district and schools, there's nothing in there about the customers, which I think the customers are the parents, the grandparents, and the overall taxpayer. Nowhere in 20-some pages does it refer to anything but professional educators, or supposed, I'm not saying all these people are professional educators, but everybody referred to as a professional or economic interest in this program. It doesn't mention how the parent should be included or should be even advised, and I think that's been the root cause of the angst that's been brought up for several meetings. So our leaders have us fighting with each other, which is discouraging. We shouldn't be. So I would like to suggest that after the curriculum meeting on Thursday, and as soon as it could be done, or considered to be done, that the school board with other true stakeholders, being some parents, whatever group you would be, be signed, draft some question, the small tissue, whichever document you want to call it, to our state legislators, because they have influential power over the DPI. The only thing the governor can do is sign a bill if the legislature gives him one. So instead of us spending all this time going back and forth and stressing each other out, I think we ought to try that approach. The other thing which would be more of a guerrilla tactic would be to get 10 or 15% of the student population opt out of the Smarter Balance test. That would severely damage the whole program. Now, I'm not advocating that we do that, but that has been tried in other places. And also, Mary Fallon, who is the governor of Oklahoma, got such a bill from her state legislature and signed it, removing them completely from Common Core. And interestingly, she is now the chairman of the National Association. So how well the entire National Governor's Association is signed on can be questioned also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Cornyn. My address is 1227 Daley Ave, Grafton, Wisconsin. I have a business in Cedarburg. And over the last year, we've learned a lot about Common Core that seems to be the catch of it. But in looking at getting down to brass tacks and how much we as a community have control over, we've become aware that we actually do have control over the standards, the curriculum, but what we don't have control over is the testing. So I'd also like to just thank the board and the curriculum committee for setting up Thursday meeting, which I understand is going to be in this room.
You can get your direction out of there.
So I would like, in looking at Smarter Balance and looking at the problems of not having local control, from what I've been able to glean from reading, talking to other people, talking to various people on various boards, I think we're starting to get a feel for what the problems are. And until you really define the problems, you can't decide what actions you're going to take and how you're going to attack those problems. So I'd like to spell out a couple of things that I'm seeing, and maybe there's a chunk, maybe there's disagreement, maybe there's other ideas on Thursday. Number one, the school district has no control over their testing. The state and federal government has exerted excessive control. The state statute 118 dot 30 says that the DPI alone dictates the testing regime. Number two, the testing was not created by educators but by the lobbyist group Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. Furthermore, the testing has not been evaluated properly in the process for creating the SBA, Smarter Balance Assessment, and its future revision. They're not accountable to taxpayers. Three, SBA was not accepted by the Cedarburg School District. It was forced upon the district by a state edict. Four, the Cedarburg School District does not know how the state and federal funding and what the effect on teacher salaries and benefits will be tied to SBA and the data collected. Five, we don't know the cost of the tests. My understanding that each test costs between $20, $30 per student, per test, and if a student fails, the test will be redone and charges made again. Six, we don't know what data is being collected, where it's going, and who has control of the data collection now and in the future. We don't know what behavior biometrics will be used along with subject mastery data. We do not know the transparency of the data collection. Will parents know the data collected, including behavior biometrics? Seven, the math testing does not include higher-level math, such as calculus. So it is clear that students and teachers will get no credit for learning these higher-level skills. Eight, we still don't know if there will be an opt-out option for the SBA. Will there be a policy for sure no negative repercussions if a student opts out of the SBA? Nine, the citizens of Cedarburg, Zaki County, and Wisconsin general do not know and understand the problems with SBA. Only official word we hear in the newspapers is that everything is fine and under control. So I'm suggesting force tests be taken. Number one, as a board, we request that you meet on this topic and compile your problem definition to include all the important issues. Get input from teachers, curriculum personnel, and other specialists. Number two, write a statement, taking a stand on this problem statement. This will communicate to the public so they can understand what our situation is. Three, state in writing what you think the best solution or solutions are to these problems. For instance, if we need Wisconsin legislation to stress to address giving testing and data collection back to the local school boards, then you need to implore citizens of Wisconsin to make this an issue in local state elections and to push for this legislation come January 2015. Number four, publish this information to local news media for dissemination to the public for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Anna McCallie, and I am at W-77, N-7699, Harvest Lane, Cedarburg. What I'm going to do is read to you something that came from a woman, Joy F. Coleman, who has already reported this to the Wisconsin Senate. But it's very important information, and it affects me personally because I too have children, as you know, in the Cedarburg schools, and first grader and third grader, and who are affected by this directly. My concern as a parent is where their information and their amount of privacy that can be maintained. As you know, we are in the information age, and it is very easy to get individuals' personal data. And the extent that the Smarter Balance testing goes to gathering students' data is shocking. It is alarming. And while Wisconsin has a solid student information privacy law in place, there are two new realities that dilute those protections for families. First, state databases are now required to be interoperable with each other and open to the federal government, making them a de facto national database. Second, Wisconsin has promised to send student-level data to the Smarter Balance Assessment organization, which has in turn agreed to provide timely and complete access to any and all data collected at the state level to the U.S. Department of Education, or its designated program monitors, technical assistance providers, or research partners, and to the GAO. Smarter Balance intends to create a centralized data repository where all student responses and professional development materials will be housed, and all test results and other information will be generated and recorded. And if the federal government can access that data, recent rule changes to federal student privacy law, Family Education Rights Privacy Act, or the FERPA, means student data can go literally anywhere. In 2012, the U.S. Department of Education rewrote FERPA to say it or any educational agency, such as the state or school, may share students' information with anyone the agency wants without consulting or notifying parents. That scares me. And that can all be found in the references in this document that I will share with you. So you may look it up yourself and study it yourself. One more point, is that Smarter Balance says that it will conduct psychometric tests on students. And we all think that sounds crazy, but it's real. It's reality. Although the psychometric testing includes highly personal psychological profiling, such as that used by the CIA and local law enforcement, according to psychiatrist and assessment specialist Dr. Gary Thompson, there is no independent review panel to ensure questions like this stay off what are supposed to be academic tests. Why are they asking personal information about my children? I don't want people to know that information. Smarter Balance says that it may test for self-management skills, such as time management, goal setting, self-awareness, persistence, and study skills, all of which sound, you know, innocuous, but after federal privacy law changes and the data collected on children under Common Core, Thompson concluded, this is that psychiatrist, that the level of information provided about a particular child is both highly sensitive and extremely personal. So I am hoping that this school board will decide to opt out of the testing altogether. We have already circulated to a lot of parents around the Cedarburg area, forms that have been written by a lawyer in Milwaukee who has helped us come up with the forms to help parents to opt out of this standardized testing. So it's already in place as a movement to move ahead, and I'm hoping that the school board will support us and help us in eliminating this process from the Common Core curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tom Riddick. I live at West 777, N-769, Harvest Lane. It's the third time that I've been here for meetings and the second time I've spoken. I'm extremely disappointed that we're not having this on the agenda, what was asked for on three different occasions. We've got a chance to talk to some of the members. There is this idea that somehow we're going to get some information from the state that's going to help us to make this decision, but nothing's going to come down until after the elections. And there are a lot of people that are really nervous and anxious because there is no information on what's going to happen. There's already the textbooks that we're using that are Common Core-oriented. The Common Core is not something you can take apart. It's the whole thing or nothing. It's copyrighted. If you're in it, you're in it. If you're out, you're out. You can't take pieces of it legally and use it. You have to either develop your own, or you're in 100%. So I don't know why we're not having discussion about this. We're sitting here telling you our concerns, but we have no clue what you think. But we'll be a meeting about this, but I'm sure it's going to come up as, we're going to put it to a discussion. We're going to have a group look into it. And as time takes on towards our next school year, we're not going to see what's going on. It's very, very disappointing because this is coming from a very, very high level. We already see what happens in government at a high level. You set standards, and you put performance set with standards, and what happens? People lie. Look what happened with VA. They didn't care about patient care. In most places, they cared about their bonuses. So when you set these things up, there's a lot of unintended circumstances and consequences on it that are set up right from the beginning. If you tailor this to the results of these tests you're talking about, you're going to be testing to the test. The test does not have higher math in it, and so people that are, if we're looking at taking that extra amount and having our people do better, they're actually at a disadvantage. They're actually have to go back and relearn the lower math they're going to be tested at. People have done that because they will get lower scores. So the ability to go on to do AP will actually be disadvantaged in the system, but we don't know what's happening because we don't know. So we're coming into this, and there's no feedback because you can't talk to us, we can't talk to you. Three times we've asked you to put on the agenda, and we're not. I don't even know if that's legal. And if we're not on the agenda next week or next month, I think we're going to have to look and see if that's actually legal for you to do. We have asked three times to have discussion, and we're not on the agenda. So I think that it should be on the agenda by the next time. We will make the superintendent, we will make sure that they're aware of it. Are you aware that we have asked, we have asked three times to be on the agenda, and we're not? There should be a discussion. We should know what's happening with our children, and it shouldn't be this black cloud in a blank box that's going to be there for us until there aren't any chances, because basically we're just waiting it out. And we're going to have whatever's left over because there's no other And it shouldn't be this black cloud in a blank box that's going to be there for us until there aren't any choices. Because basically, we're just waiting it out. And we're going to have whatever's left over because there's no other choices or there's no money to make a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, can I just clarify? There is a meeting Thursday night of the Curriculum Committee, which the entire board is invited to, and it will be an informational meeting of the board. And this is a curriculum issue that needs to start with the Curriculum Committee. Colonel.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Victoria Benson Hora. I live at W-66, N-582, Madison Avenue. I'm also an employee of the Cedarburg School District in the capacity of vocal music director at Cedarburg High School. I'd like to continue my point number three for recognitions. I'd like to share with you some good news. In our very final concert of the year, the National Association of Music Merchants presented, Mr. Walkles, Clayton Walkles, the band director, and myself, with this award saluting Cedarburg High School for outstanding support of music education, enriching the lives of children, and advancing student achievement. This is a very special award. There are only ninety-two schools in the entire United States who receive this. And it is also an award that recognizes not only outstanding music programs, but communities who also support the fine arts. So Mr. Walkles and I would like the entire community to know it's not only an award for our work, but for the support we have received from the community. In addition to that, right now as we speak, my colleague Clayton Walkles is on his way to the University of Wisconsin-Green Bay. He has been selected as the brass section coach for the orchestra, the State Orchestra Program. At this event, it's called the Wisconsin High School State Honors Music Project, we have three of our outstanding students who have been selected to participate in these choral and jazz bands. These students will then perform at the Wisconsin School and Music Association Convention and Meetings in October in Madison. This is a very high honor for our school and for these three young students, Junior Jan Hora, Sophomore Nat Esten, and Freshman Teddy Esten. Jan and Nat are selected. They are two of the twenty-five students who will be performing in the jazz band. And Teddy is one of the twenty-five boys who will be singing in the ninety-voice chorus. I'd like to also add to that, for the statistics, it's exciting. There were fourteen-hundred students that auditioned for this. And Cedarburg has three students that were selected. So it is considered a very high honor. It's like going to state and winning state when you're on the athletic team. So to close out the school year, I'm really excited to share this news with you. And I would also like to say, as we approach the 2014-15 school year, all of our team from K through twelve, we look forward to working with you to continue our outstanding support of music education. Thank you.
My name is Kayla Foz, and I live on Franklin Avenue. And I have a couple of concerns. One was from the last meeting, Mr. Lambertson. That conceptual idea you introduced for evaluating teachers was a little concerning to me. Coming from teachers, my mother and father are both teachers. I think teacher evaluations, I don't know if you were planning on evaluating them, but it's sort of an assault, insult to not only the teachers, but their families that they're supporting. Your idea sounds enticing to a teacher in theory, rewarding them with more money according to how they perform on their evaluation. However, we live in a community that's desirable. We have, we have parents that support their teachers, support their children, and it's a privilege to come to this community. Evaluations should be based by the parents that are evaluating their teachers and by happy children that belong in the teacher's classroom. So I caution the board to that idea. To me, it sounds like if the superintendent's out giving evaluations to teachers, that seems to be kind of a very dangerous controlling power grab that seems to almost set the table for the Smarter Balance assessments, which is tied to the teachers' jobs. What's not talked about here is, once those assessments start for the children, the teachers' jobs are on the line. And that's pretty scary. We have great teachers. This is a great community. And this is a point that I don't know if the teachers in this community are thoroughly aware of. I don't know if they're being told that, but it's a warning for teachers to, we are on your side, and this Common Core and the Smarter Balance assessment and all of it go hand in hand. It's all tied together, and it's a tap on teachers. So I caution the board with approving any idea like that. Really, a teacher's, in the real world, all of our salaries or money are, you know, goes up with the economy and all of that, but... So that's my first point. My second point is he touched on children taking tests on the computer to determine their college or career-bond path and track. That's another disturbing thing. Who in middle school or at different times in your high school career, who knew what they're going to do? I mean, very few people. A lot of times, children go off to colleges. They get degrees. Are they working in their fields? Absolutely not. So where does the school think that they can administer tests on a computer and put children in those paths? That's totally insidious, and I can't even believe those are ideas that are being put forth. So that's my other concern. Next, I would like to ask about the question of CISA-1. What exactly does Cedarburg pay CISA-1 for? That's on the agenda, so I was just curious. What, what does the community get and how much is paid to it? Can't you respond back since it's on the agenda? Number I. If it's on the agenda, can't you provide that question? Answer me.
We can talk about it now. CISA provides the district with special ed services for those in situations where it's not necessarily fiscally responsible to hire a full-time staff member. We're able to contract with CISA proportioning a person's contract to provide services to our students.
So what was last year's 2013-14? What did the district pay CISA-1?
Our contract last year to CISA-1 was $264,162. And this year is $185,285.
Does that, does that sound normal to everybody? That, that's for a part-time, a little...
It is for several staff members in several areas.
Wait, what was that number again? Two-hundred sixty...
Last year was $264,000.
How many staff members?
Off the top of my head, it is to service students who have vision impairments, deaf and hard hearing needs, orientation and mobility needs, and audiological needs.
That sounds like a lot of money, and that sounds like salaries. I don't know how $264,000.
One, if I could just step in, one of the things, CISA is kind of a, like a contracting agency in the sense that instead of a school district like ourselves hiring a full-time audiologist, let's say, to help a student at a elementary school with a hearing issue ten times a week, we'll contract just for those hours and a certain date and time period, Tuesdays and Thursdays, for an hour or something like that to help them, as opposed to having a full-time person who the rest of the time they don't have students to help. So if you do the math, it's far better mathematically to not hire a full-time person to sit there for someone who's not being used full-time. So we contract with these companies, and we, say, Cedarburg and Grafton and McWhon, Washington Hartford, whoever, all these other school districts, they might be driving around in different school districts. They're not our employees. They're CISA-1's. There's like, how many CIs throughout the state? Nine CIs throughout the state that are set up geographically so that the people in that district drive around that quadrant or corner of the state to provide services to school districts, to public schools. I don't know if they do it privately or not, but it's actually a very efficient method of doing instead of hiring all these people full-time when we don't have a full-time need for that.
Yeah, definitely. I'd like to see that break down because I can't even imagine $264,000. And that that's a good deal per se, giving somebody in the community a big position. And why do we support CISA-6? What's the point of that? That's on K. So that one, what's CISA-6? That's the nine-year district, so I'm just curious.
We can address that during the conference.
We'll get a chair to talk to you. We have a question. Can I ask it again?
Okay. And lastly, I, you know, a lot of us have spent time. Personally for me, our family's given out paychecks because we've cared so much. I love, I'm, I'm here because I not only love and protect my children, but this community. I, my children, we got up at 4:30 in the morning, and we were in the car at 5:30 to go to Madison in support of a bill. We were there at 8:00 AM. You shake your eyes, you know. We were there registering. We were first in the line, and we were the last to speak. And our children, six children all combined together, we stood up for freedom and liberty for all of your children. And our children saw firsthand grandstanding in the horse and pony show in Madison. So why, why do we keep coming back here today? Because we, as parents, taxpayers in a community, this issue with Common Core and what is going on with the testing and the curriculum, it's not going away. It's just growing. As people begin to awaken and know what's going on, they will, they will rock in you. So my last point to ponder is taken from John Bunyan's Pilgrim Progress. Obstinate lived up to its name. His obstinacy caused him to reject the truth. He tenaciously held to his worldly concepts of reality and could not be moved from them. Before we dismiss obstinate, though, perhaps we should contemplate how obstinacy could be turned into a positive force in our lives as we tenaciously hold to and follow after the truth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Nelson, W-67, N-51, Franklin Avenue. I just really want to thank and appreciate everybody that's seen the time on this beautiful day to be here to talk about this important issue. I actually lived through a Cedarburg education system alone with my husband, and he graciously loved all of the challenges and everything that they were able to do for us and get us into being passionate not only with faith in our careers, but also being able to hopefully implement that in our children's lives. I'm very passionate about education, especially being here in Cedarburg, great life, teaching environment, and to help better themselves. We really, we are, we should be exceptionally happy that we're nationally known in the district. I want to change only as a better person, not dumb them down or brainwash them, into being able to think for themselves as I truly feel the path of the Common Core will eventually be. Historically, the community of Cedarburg has been an ideal place for the family because of the church's industry and strong local clean government, and of course, its school system. Cedarburg is the, pretty much the poster of the image when it says it takes a village to raise a child. For over a century into this day, these institutions, pillars of faith, civil governance, hard work, and solid education stand tall and sturdy, vigorously supporting the Houston of full we are. Serious-minded, self-reliant, industrious Americans who will take pride in the direct from our past, who wish to sustain the best in the path by continuing to time and improving practices that will be implemented today. It is that wish for the future. Cedarburg remains the American ideal, the vision so perfectly designed into the reality of our nation's founding fathers. With credentials like ours, the citizens of Cedarburg, especially parents and students, hardly need or need want the federal government intervening with our children through the Smarter Balance assessments. I wish to cite a cliche that continues to prove itself correct. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. If we need another colossal federal act of legislators passing only, read or think after it's been signed into law. Again, another cliche that continually proves itself, the devil is in the details. The fine print of SBA must be examined and its implications not papered over, but publicly transparent. Electing to be bound by federal law is a matter of local consensus. And this is one of the objects that we'll be discussing, it's unlikely on Thursday, appreciated by the lack of consensus over the CBA. We're here tonight to know the fine print and challenges of its implications. First, we fear loss of control over the state to the government. State CEP-118.3 permits Wisconsin DPI to establish testing parameters. I've spoken with families who purposely elected to live in Cedarburg moving from out-of-state areas. They came to me and discussed how extremely they are disappointed that Cedarburg would even consider adopting SBA. They saw firsthand how their serious straight-A students actually no longer even wanted to go to school. Is that what we really want to teach our youth? Turn away from education, tamp down their passion of learning, reward their efforts of mediocrity, send time out to the world to prepare just like everybody else here? As parents, we're here to say no. We're looking to offer our children the finest preparation for our children's tax dollars that we can provide as parents. Do we expect the same from the school board members? Second, the suspicion, or excuse me, the research that supports the overreach in assessment. Who does that? The lobbyist group for the Smarter Balance assessment that has created that, not the educators. Third, it's unlikely we'll be discussing on Thursday the different actions that we can explore to opt out. Fourth, I think everybody here wants to honestly say how much we love our teachers. And after examining some of the limitations that SBA will place on some of these creative and talented teachers, now they'll be reduced to teaching with the core test rather than really teaching a mastery of ideas, content, and skills that we've all had in the past. Have their voices actually been heard to you? Are they, which we look to as professionals for parents, looking to provide our children with the best education? Wonderful teachers that I spoke with as of recently retiring due to the senseless quality and legal, being in the legal with the federal government by embracing the assessment conformity. These are the teachers that actually need to stay. I've also spoken with teachers who unfortunately, they're staying, but they're appalled by this pack and are afraid to speak up and lose in fear of losing not only their jobs, but having on the job repercussions. How far have we fallen if speaking what you believe is better than how we were pressed with fear? Fifth, the cost of instituting SBA with our district remains a little murky. Yes, we know the initial price ranges between the twenty and thirty-dollar range. But what about the retesting, the fracturing, the huge costs? What about the loss of the ring time? Finally, we're, what about the databasing? The unforeseen truth of the information and data that will be produced by the education system? How long will this go on? Expectations and benchmarks prove useful for parents and children in districts such as ours? Continually ranking one, again, the highest performing in the state of the nation? Here's a season just to make one point abundantly clear to you. All of our elected officials are not comfortable with children's education's future being dictated by Washington and Madison. This should come as no surprise. In 2013, the PEW Research Pool found only twenty-six percent of... In 2013, the PEW Research Pool found only 26% of the mayor who said, quote, "They trusted the federal government to do the right thing all or most of the time," unquote. And the SBA with the formulary teaching that must conform to preparing students for the assessments are mandated by whom? The federal government. We as parents this evening are not among the trusting 26% of the PEW pool identified, and we definitely oppose the actions that you institute the SBA in our schools. We have elected you to do the will of the electorate. The voices of the parents and teachers should and must be heard in honor as part of that electorate. Unless this happens, another cliche will prove far from the, will prove itself far from again being true, that we are a nation of the people, by the people and for the people. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Miranda Matthews. I edit since 1985, Make the Road Grafton, Cedarburg, Delaware. I would like to say a few things to start. I guess I would like to, I've spent, I've been more time on this subject than what I should have, researching it and being indoctrinated in the topic and by paying tens of thousands of dollars to local universities to pay for education classes. I want to summarize a little bit, just a smidgen of what I've learned. The Common Core, most people in the community don't even have food. The standards were state-accepted, but they were definitely not state-led. The international benchmark claim is a pretty shaky one. It does not mean they are better than or even equal to international standards that are considered high. There is no public input before the standards were adopted. State-led decision-makers had very little time themselves and had agreed to, and had to agree to them in principle that the actual standards were not yet even complete. The only content experts on the panel to review the standards refused to sign off on them. They testify even today that the standards are seriously flawed. Much of the specific standards are not supported by research, but they are considered experimental. In addition to national standards, as a state, we agreed to new national tests that are funded and controlled by the federal government. I'm learning that not only in other places, but right here in Cedarburg, you guys are attempting to tie teacher pay to the student test performance, which is appalling. Not only test scores, but additional personal information about our children and our family will be tracked in a statewide data collection project for the express purpose of making decisions about their educational path and aligning them with the workforce. There are fields in this database also for tracking homeschool students. The first step toward getting preschool-aged children into the data project is currently underway. The data project was federally funded with the stipulation it would be compatible with other state's data projects and even other federal data collection projects. Wouldn't this a future create a de facto national database of children and candidates? The rights that we had enjoyed previously that were protected under law are in review and on the federal level, parental rights to deny the collection of the data or restrict their access to it, they have been changed through executive regulation, not a legislative process. The financing, writing, evaluation and promotion of the standards has all been done by non-governmental special interest groups with a common agenda. I've learned that their agenda is in direct conflict with what I consider to be the best interests of our children, our family and even our country. I, you know, I began with concerns about the standards, but realizing the financial, legal, constitutional and representative issues hiding behind the standards, they, these concerns are even much, much larger. Lately, I've been reviewing the standards in more depth and the curriculum that's being proposed in local districts and it is alarming to say the least. And I am really very tired of hearing some of the responses that we're getting. Last week, we were told that the school board did not accept Common Core. On your own website, the School Board of Education website lists multiple dates when you guys have taken a vote on these standards. And I, I am just appalled that you continue to insist that you have not adopted them. Would you have? I am appalled even further that you outsource your responsibilities to any other agency, state or private corporations which are behind the new Common Core standards. And it is not true that it is merely a curriculum issue. There are certainly curriculum issues, but it is not merely curriculum issue. You need to change the policy of accepting Wisconsin State standards as Cedarburg School Board standards and vote on the standards individually and separately, whatever standards you're choosing, and not just make it a blanket, you know, we're going to just accept and be able to standards. That's, that's wrong. I request a public hearing on the district relationship with Common Core, Next Generation and the 21st Century Education. These subjects are offensive to truth in education in every way that I have encountered them. And I request that you make it an agenda item to discuss the Smarter Balance testing impact on the district and the opt-out opportunities for parents. You have more control and more legal authority here in this room than you are admitting. And I know we need to address these things on all levels, of course, on the state level as well as the national level, but you need to address what you can hear. That includes rejecting the Common Core standards, rejecting Common Core and the Next Generation curriculum, and making our curriculum about actual subjects, real, true math, real, true science, real, true English and all the other subjects, like real, actual subjects, not the garbage that's in the, in the, in the Common Core or Next Generation. And, and I, I expect that you are truthful with us and not say things like, oh, we never did it and stuff like that, because that makes me very angry and when I know that that is not the case. And I want you to take responsibility for, for what, the responsibility that we've given you here as elected officials, I want you to take that responsibility and not pass it off on other people or say that we need to go to other people or say that you have nothing to do with it, but actually take the responsibility that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And next move on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda includes the medicine school board meeting from May 20th, budget and finance review, and the personnel report is our practice. Conrad, would you please read the names and the minutes for the personnel actionable items this evening with special acknowledgement and recognition to Angela, our new enforcement officer. Thanks.
Certainly, thank you. This evening, we have a number of retirement presentations. Anne Marie Gleef from Tied Teacher High School, Kath Lee Mahoney, reading teacher at West Lawn, Joe Paddock, English teacher at high school, Gerald Sorcy, tech head teacher at high school, Jill Tender, middle school Webster teacher, and Angela Zimki, speech and language psychologist, have all submitted resignations. We also had some classified employees who decided to quit their positions, Kathy Cocking, Deborah Knight, Sue Miller, Gino, Joan Scholes and Terry Wagner. We also have retirement from an administrator, Kimberly Gibson, principal of Thorson Elementary has requested retirement effective at the end of this year. We also have a full-time contract, teaching contract for Samantha Champion, special education teacher at Webster. We have a full-time educator contract for Carmen Clunner, sixth grade, common arts, social studies teacher at Webster. We have a full-time educator contract for Michelle Newell for the kindergarten position at Thorson. And we also have a contract for the new preschool at Thorson Elementary School. Sorry, one second, I made sure I didn't forget someone. And then we also have Angela Little as being recommended for the Thorson Elementary Principal position. We're very excited to have Angela. She's been a principal for many years, eight years' experience at Holy Family Parish. She was the top candidate out of 28 applicants that we had. We had an extremely strong pool, many veteran elementary principals who applied to come to Cedarburg, and Angela was the top candidate after three rounds of interviews, some written scenarios. We had feedback from staff and parents about things that they were looking for, for the candidates for this position, and we are extremely excited to be recommending Angela as the next principal at Thorson, and she is here tonight. We got to meet her before the meeting, so we appreciate you coming and we look forward to having her join our team. So we ask you to approve all of those resignations, resignments and contracts.
Mr. President, my move is?
Second. Motion is second.
I can just make a quick comment on one. I have known Joseph Paddock for the last five, six years. He has been an outstanding teacher, from my experience with two of my children having worked with him. And I wish him all the best. I'm sorry he's leaving the school district, but he has served us very well in his time here.
He's been able to pursue his desire to get into administration, so he had accepted an assistant principal position with another district, and we wish him well and absolutely appreciate the work he's done. We appreciate the work of all of the people that have done for the district and we're sorry to see him go, but we wish him all.
Just like the rectory show.
All right, motion is second. Allison, favor?
Aye.
And motion carries. Angela, please.
Welcome, Angela.
Reports and recommendations?
The next item will be the donation to a school district. I recommend the Board of Education accept the $4,500 donation from Cedarburg Athletic Booster Club to be used for purchase and electric cart for use by CHS athletic trainer and the athletic department.
Motion is second. Motion is second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
I recommend that Board of Education accept the following donations from the Fine Arts Boosters totaling $2,000. $500 to CHS Drama Department, $500 donation to the CHS Vocal Music Department, $500 for the CHS Band Department and $500 to CHS Art Department.
So, second. Motion is second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
I have to abstain on that one, so I'll say.
Okay. Record your flag, then.
The third donation this evening, I recommend the Board of Education accept the following donations from the Kohl's Cares Field Trip Grant Program totaling $5,000. Two $1,000 grant awards for Cedarburg High School Science Program Field Trips. $1,000 grant award to Parkview Elementary, grade five, to be used for the Junior Achievement Bystown Field Trip. $1,000 grant award to Parkview to be used by grade three for the Discovery World Field Trip. And $1,000 grant award to Parkview to be used by grade one for the Milwaukee County Zoo Field Trip.
Motion is second. Second. Motion is second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Against? Cares.
Thank you very much.
I am the, I am the, uh, very much.
Board President, this evening, we appear to present to you the current education curriculum. The curriculum committee of board members received their packet on 5/29. I have three additional copies, and they're pretty hefty, so I didn't make copies for all of the board members, but I'll pass those around for those board members who were planning to attend the curriculum committee board meeting on 5/29. We are excited to have Paul Smith here, who is the curriculum committee representative for the CTE Department. She has been working with the department over the past five years to develop and find and present the curriculum here this evening. The curriculum committee of the board reviewed the curriculum in depth, and we had a great conversation on cat courses, 3D printing, personal finance. And tonight, Alice is here with members of the department to present to you an overview of the program. Knowing that the curriculum committee of the board received the curriculum and asked detailed questions about it, this evening is just an opportunity to present an overview to you from Alice and to certainly field any additional questions that you may have based on your session. So I'd like to choose Alice.
Do you want to begin, Alex? All right, I thought you were gone.
I thought what you were gonna say.
I'd like to start out by introducing some of the department members that are here. We have Dan Keneese, Dan K, good stand. Dan works over at Webster and he's responsible for picking off the gateway curriculum, which is the middle school level Project Lead the Way program, and we will be highlighting it in video in a few moments. Joella Bistl is Cedarburg grad, Cedarburg resident and my partner and colleague in Family Consumer Science, and we have been very lucky to have her, this is her seventh year here at CHS. And we have Jeff Martin. Jeff Martin is new to the district, he's working in the Department of Technology and Engineering, and he's been a great asset and helped with the development of our new curriculum. We have a couple of members that are missing due to family responsibilities and work commitments, and I would like to mention them. In the Business Department, we have John Canham, Ron Hedrick, Mark Furburger. Also in Technology Education, David Teich, he's in New Mexico and teaching Project Lead the Way. And we have Karen Tiffany. At the middle school level, we have Carmen Gayden in the Family Consumer Science area. So we've got some really super people that work really hard to update their programs and really very proud to present an overview for you tonight. On behalf of the Department of Career and Technical Education, I would like to thank the members of the Curriculum Committee for their review of our revised curriculum. It is quite lengthy. We appreciate the feedback and questions and intend to follow up with new suggestions. The Department of Career and Technical Education took a business approach when updating the curriculum. The connection to real-world skills is inherent in our program. Our review process began in the study of other districts both within our state and nationally to see how we fare with our curriculum. We reviewed state standards and national standards, creating in most cases curriculum that surpassed standards designed for our programs. We included activities that addressed Common Core standards in math and literacy whenever possible. We worked to add rigor to curriculum that while already relevant, needed to tie in with current employment and post-secondary needs. The result, a modernized version of the former vocational education. Our comprehensive curriculum is preparing students in Cedarburg to be college and career-ready. The work-based learning and career readiness emphasis that our classes have is providing direction to future careers and strengthening 21st century skills in problem-solving, critical thinking, communication and technology. As a department, we'd like to thank the Board of Education for their support in allowing us to continue to deliver curriculum that has tremendous value to students in the Cedarburg School District. Our goal is to follow the changing trends and continue to update courses as needed to continue to provide a quality, comprehensive program in the area of career technical education. Please now- Please now, we're going to have you look at our facilities in a short, just under seven-minute video presentation that highlights some of the changes in our curriculum.
Over. Over.
Here in the back.
Okay.
So, thank you. Are there any questions?
You know, I just wanted to say that I had a chance to attend that meeting, even though I'm not a curriculum committee, I just thought it was really an impressive presentation. Not only because of the enthusiasm of the teachers, because of how, you know, the needs of the student, how you're tweaking the curriculum to meet the needs of the student, but even more so, kind of where our economy is going. And that's why I was so impressed with it too, because obviously at the end of the day, you know, our students need jobs, and they can get a great feel for that and a lot of curriculum that you put together. So I thought it was a really impressive presentation. I thoroughly enjoyed it.
I have a question. When we discussed at the committee level, we talked about the title to the, to MAM. We talked about Cedarburg standards, which highly exceed Common Core, that this presentation said Common Core. So that's a base. Did you, is it to our levels of our MAM teachers or teaching our MAM, that's what we discussed with them earlier?
It's illegal to use Common Core as a base and catalog to it.
Our school goals include increasing the amount of math and reading whenever possible in our areas. So that's really what we were looking at, with, with the university and the math and reading. So it's touching upon some of those, you know, practical areas within Cedarburg.
Okay, thank you.
I just think one of the values of having kids, you know, do the different tours and simulate the different jobs and so forth, is to oftentimes figure out that's what they don't want to, you know, and maybe their passion is something else, and, you know, have those experiences, those internships right away, maybe it's not a path they want. And, you know, you have to go through that in your life, the discovery phase, the way you want to do so. I think it's also helpful with that. Can be very valuable for someone that might think they want to do a certain career and go into college, you can go down that path and work during that experience right away. So I think that has value as well.
I'd like to add, if I could, I was also at that presentation today, and what struck me is, you know, we have a lot of time to focus on English scores and math, you know, you really, we never focus on art because we constantly, you know, grade or thank our teachers. And the things that you guys are teaching, the technical side of things, for technical trades and the construction side and electronics and things like that, but also for the Project Lead the Way, the engineering, things that we started maybe out of six, seven years ago in our district, I think are two wonderful paths for kids that we never really, we had them before, but they're not evolving. I was very impressed with the changes and the improvements you're looking to make in those things. So it's just not a classic take, but start to explore career side, and I think we expect for doing that in the following in that way. I was impressed with you.
We now have a beautiful facility at Webster, and so we're starting there growing.
And I was excited to hear when I heard that, you know, there are girls now looking at the different things other than, you know, what people think they should be in, and that we've got, you know, girls that are taking in our engineering and our computer and, you know, really being able to sell them things that they lack. And that's great, having to go out there, I thought it was awesome.
Excellent.
I want to thank Allison and the entire team for all that they've done over the past five years, and you can see by the size of this document, that it's not supposed to be a little task. And there have been things that are now documented that have not been documented in curriculum. So it's nice to have a document or curriculum actually thoroughly recorded, so we can continue to grow that and allow this to evolve. And as a setting your curriculum cycle, our thought and our plan is to revisit this on a more regular basis, so we can keep current with the changing trends in the workforce and CTE. So thank you, Allison, for your leadership, and please do your stuff. I mean, if I'm not able to make this happen.
Right. Was the recommendation of the curriculum committee to our committee approval?
I would approve of the career, of the curriculum, and also thank you for the teachers both who are here tonight, but also the votes you put for you tonight, at least that's on my thanks sheet.
I would second that.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. End of slate. Thank you everyone.
Thanks. Good job.
All right, Tom. Your contract is about close to the weekend.
Thank you, Board President. Tonight, we have Jason Law, who's the curriculum council director for the world management department. At the last curriculum committee of the board meeting, we had a discussion regarding the moving experience for the summer of two thousand fifteen, and at that time, there was a good and thorough discussion about the trip, and there were a few questions that were raised by the board members at that time. And Jason is here to address those questions and address any other questions that you may have regarding the experience for the summer of two thousand fifteen.
Thank you all again for having me here. I have some packets going around that were distributed at the last curriculum committee meeting, so those of you that were there should have that. I made enough copies for every board member, as it wasn't as healthy as the last packet there. But if you already have one, we won't spend too much time on it. Mainly, I'm here to answer a few questions that were asked of me at the last committee meeting. But for those of you that weren't there and they just want to quickly go through, being respectful, being respectful of the time, what was, I was talking about at the last meeting. So in that packet, there is a survey of possible trips that students that showed high interest and had indicated from their parents that they would support that, what of six trips they would prefer. From that data, I presented a homestay trip in Costa Rica for fourteen days, seven days traveling with me and other chaperones that are on the trip, and then six days with a family in Costa Rica. Some questions came up around that stay that I'll address a little bit later on. And in addition to what the students have indicated from our curriculum perspective, at the last meeting, we had also talked about the six AP themes that are really driving some of the revisions of our, I guess, of our curriculum, levels one through AP. Those include global challenges, science and technology, beauty and aesthetics, families and communities, personal and public identities, and contemporary life. Of those six themes from the AP curriculum, families and communities, personal and public identities, and contemporary lives are all things that I think would be enriched by a student's experience in another country where they're fully immersed in the language. So in the past, one of the reservations was the homestay and the lack of contact with me during that time, as well as no formal background check being done. Another issue that was brought up was where the nearest medical facility is to the communities in which the students will be staying, so I hope to address those three questions. To start with the communities, there are seven post-communities in Costa Rica, and my contact at ISE had indicated that every community would have at least a community clinic where students can be tended to in case of a minor illness or injury, and that for an emergency issue, a hospital could be found within twenty to thirty minutes, or approximately ten minutes within two of the communities from the seven communities that they work with. Regarding the references, one of the questions was if the terminal aspect of the application for the families is the reference check, are those references actually checked? And the answer was that yes, all references are followed through with, by the coordinator, unless the coordinator has a personal connection with that family. So in other words, if the coordinator in Costa Rica does not know that family personally, the reference check is carryout. So what is that reference check? Well, any student, or excuse me, any family of a student that hosts, that hosts, would be visited by the coordinator in Costa Rica, and that coordinator in Costa Rica receives training from ISE, one of the staff representatives from Minnesota, trains them, and then they provide a handbook to the families with guidelines for, I guess, how to effectively host. If during that visit or during the training, if something like, let's say, there was no room for a student to stay in, where, like if there was, you know, a mixed gender veteran, that student, that family would be taken off, they would not be able to be part of the program. If there were some kind of safety issues or unsanitary conditions, lack of access to water, electricity, any of those situations would be grounds for denying a host family the opportunity to host a student. The third question related to this was the level of experience of these host families, and my contact indicated that it varies from community to community, from one year to the next, which is kind of what I expected. But again, I hope that the process that I described helps you to be more comfortable with the host families and the fact that I propose that within a day or two of being there myself or the other chaperone, whoever it may be, would be going to the families to meet with them, as well as one more time during that. So with those hopes in mind, I'm formally proposing that you approve a trip to Costa Rica for the summer of two thousand fifteen.
Just for clarification purposes, the board policy, Administrator Rule three fifty-two dot one, extended travel procedures, actually, the requirement in this rule is that the board is informed of the trip. This is administrative process in terms of reviewing and getting final approval, but the administrative rule indicates that the board is informed of the charred process before. So. for the summer of 2015, and at that time there was a good and thorough discussion about the trip, and there were a few questions that were raised by the board members at that time. And Jason is here to address those questions and address any other questions that you may have regarding the experience for the summer of 2015.
Thank you all again for having me here. I have some packets going around that were distributed at the last curriculum committee meeting, so those of you that weren't there should have that. I made enough copies for every board member, it wasn't as healthy as the last packet there. But if you already have one, we won't spend too much time on it. Mainly I'm here to answer a few questions that were asked of me at the last committee meeting. But for those of you that weren't there and they just want to quickly go through, being respectful, being respectful of the time, what was, I was talking about at the last meeting. So in that packet there is a survey of possible trips that students that showed high interest and had indicated from their parents that they would support that, what of six trips they would prefer. From that data, I presented a homestay trip in Costa Rica for 14 days, seven days traveling with me and other chaperones that are on the trip, and then six days with a family in Costa Rica. Some questions came up around that state that I'll address a little bit later on. And in addition to what the students have indicated, from our curriculum perspective, at the last meeting we had also talked about the six AP themes that are really driving some of the revisions of our, I guess of our curriculum, levels one through AP. Those include global challenges, science and technology, beauty and aesthetics, families and communities, personal and public identities, and contemporary life. Of those six themes from the AP curriculum, families and communities, personal and public identities, and contemporary lives are all things that I think would be enriched by a student's experience in another country where they're fully immersed in the language. So in the past, one of the reservations was the homestay and the lack of contact with me during that time, as well as no formal background check being done. Another issue that was brought up was where the nearest medical facility is to the communities in which the students will be staying, so I hope to address those three questions. To start with the communities, there are seven post-communities in Costa Rica, and my contact at ISE had indicated that every community would have at least a community clinic where students can be tended to in case of a minor illness or injury, and that for an emergency issue, a hospital could be found within 20 to 30 minutes, or approximately 10 minutes within two of the communities from the seven communities that they work with. Regarding the references, one of the questions was if the terminal aspect of the application for the families is the reference check, are those references actually checked? And the answer was that yes, all references are followed through with by the coordinator unless the coordinator has a personal connection with that family. So in other words, if the coordinator in Costa Rica does not know that family personally, the reference check is carryout. So what is that reference check? Well, any student, or excuse me, any family of a student that hosts, that hosts, would be visited by the coordinator in Costa Rica, and that coordinator in Costa Rica receives training from ISE, one of the staff representatives from Minnesota, trains them, and then they provide a handbook to the families with guidelines for, I guess, how to effectively host. If during that visit or during the training, if something like, let's say, there was no room for a student to stay in, where, like if there was, you know, a mixed gender veteran, that student, that family would be taken off, they would not be able to be part of the program. If there were some kind of safety issues or unsanitary conditions, lack of access to water, electricity, any of those situations would be grounds for denying a host family the opportunity to host a student. The third question related to this was the level of experience of these host families, and my contact indicated that it varies from community to community, from one year to the next, which is kind of what I expected. But again, I hope that the process that I described helps you to be more comfortable with the host families and the fact that I propose that within a day or two of being there myself or the other chaperone, whoever it may be, would be going to the families to meet with them, as well as one more time during that. So with those hopes in mind, I'm formally proposing that you approve a trip to Costa Rica for the summer of 2015.
Just for clarification purposes, the board policy, administrative rule 352 dot one, extended travel procedures, actually, the requirement in this rule is that the board is informed of the trip. This is administrative process in terms of reviewing and getting final approval, but the administrative rule indicates that the board is informed, charted that process before. So, you know, we're trying to bring closure so that we could start planning, and parents could start planning, and students and all the rest. Are there any concerns that board members have at this time that need to be further explored?
So the, you mentioned that background check, they come into the host house and they interview the people that are there, right?
Yeah, so while there's no, like, formal background check, the coordinator in the host community would be going out to the home if that person is approved to host.
And how does that, how does that jive with what the AFAS does, or do you have any idea? I don't want to be on the spot, but...
I can't really speak to AFAS.
Yep. Okay. And then, have all these families already hosted people that our kids are going to be going to?
That was one of the questions that did come up, and I attempted to get that information. And what I had expected to hear, which is what I did hear, is that it really does vary from community to community, year to year, because they try to pair up our students with somebody that's with one year of their age range. So as families get older, you know, they only have two or three kids, then they, I guess, filter out of the host family pool and new ones are brought in.
That's a good question. Do all of those families have kids?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. That is one of the requirements, that host families have a same-gender son or, I guess, a same-gender child of, as the host, or as the student that's coming there, and that they be within a year age range. So if I'm a 15-year-old girl, and I'm going there, I'd need that family to have a 14, 15, or 16-year-old host sibling female.
There's no criminal background check on his father or mother?
No, there's no formal criminal background check.
Or the brother?
Nope, there's not. Yeah, the, the terminal would be the, the reference and then the coordinator visit to the, the family. So those would be, I guess, the end check and ballots on the families.
Sure. I just have a hard time with it. I mean, we have criminal background checks on our staff, and they're not staying over our staff's homes. We're trying to create a safe environment for our kids, and though we don't have approval on this, I just have a problem with the background check. And I see the value of it from the personality aspect and the culture and the language and everything else, I think that's great, but for me, I just feel a lot better. Our kids went there, if there was some type of background check, that was commensurate, commensurate with what we do here in the United States. And I don't know if there's a cultural aspect where it doesn't exist or what have you, but I just don't feel comfortable saying their kids somewhere where we're not providing the same protection that we do in this building, and they're sleeping over somewhere. I just, I just don't feel good about it myself. I understand the value of it, I just wish there was some type of background check.
And I appreciate that reservation. You had asked me before about AFAS, as students come from other countries through AFAS here. When I can't, while I can't speak to AFAS, ISE, the company that I work with, does bring students here, I actually helped to bring one of, a student from Spain, is going to be staying with a Galushesky family, and the Galushesky family did not undergo a background check. So the student coming from Spain that's staying here with the Galushesky family, that went through similar process, I guess it's just on both sides of the diplomatic, the Gulf or wherever, the host country of origin is, it just, it doesn't happen on either side. So just, while I couldn't speak to AFAS, I did, I just wanted to make you aware of the students that come from the ISE.
But it's in school, once that student from Spain is in this building, everyone that comes in contact with them has had a criminal background check, meaning who they are, who that's that.
Sure.
So that's, that's the standard that I'm used to, and that's, that's what I feel in that matter. I do hope that if you move forward with this in this manner, that you do tell the parents that there are limitations of the program as far as background check goes, if there is any background check, that they'll be, in fact, staying in someone's home, that they might have had an interview with in an hour, two hours, five hours, whatever the process is, I just hope you do share that with them.
Sure, and that is one of the things that I hope to do, is make everything as transparent as possible to the families. ISE has their materials, their code of conduct, and my intention is that for, if this does go forward, to provide families with that information so that they are making the most informed decisions possible.
If I could ask you a question on this, because I share the president's concern on this. Have you talked with ISE at all about the possibility of doing background checks for our students, regardless of what other school districts might require, but for our students? Is that possible?
I had not asked them specifically if they could do background checks for Cedarburg High School students last year when this came up, and I had asked if it could be done in general, or if it was done, because it was not known to me at that time whether, you know, whether that was done. The answer that I received and that, you know, that I still receive is that there, it's just not a culturally appropriate thing to do. So without having directly asked that question, I can tell you that it isn't something that's done, at least in Costa Rica. So I could, I could ask, I mean, if it would be done, but I...
I guess I would encourage you to ask. I for one am not comfortable with the explanation that it is not culturally acceptable in Costa Rica. We have other opportunities to send our students to other places where it is culturally acceptable. And I think in the time that we live, ISE needs to take a look at its own policies and procedures, because I'm not sure that the parents in this school district are any different than other parents.
Sure. I'm sorry.
You're sending, you're sending your child 3,000 miles away, and you have no idea into what family they are ultimately going to replace that doesn't pass my smart test as a parent along the road.
Sure. And what I can, I guess, just to conclude a little bit, I can say that in 2012, a similar trip to Spain was approved for 2013, which I took with no background check.
Which I think is great, but you know what? A lot's changed in the last two or three years.
Okay. Rick, you got something?
Yeah. I concur with the last two. Everybody knows what I do with the living. I would send my own child, who's a Spanish student, on this trip, because I'd be concerned for her sake. So with that in mind, I can't sit here and say it's okay for someone else's child. You know, I don't think it would be okay for my own. Because that's how I look at everything when we sit here and do things, when we look at, you know, all the different things that we do, I kind of look at it as, you know, we're accepting responsibility for other's child's just like ours, so I wouldn't do something that I think would hurt my child more or less than one else's. And I applaud the attempts to try to find it out, but their kind of abrupt response last year of this just isn't culturally normal, and to say we checked the references that they listed, well, if I'm filling out any application, I'm not, has anybody here ever put a reference down that wasn't going to give you the reference? I mean, with that in mind, I just wouldn't feel safe with it for my child, so I wouldn't support it. And I think it's great to get them out there and see these, these other countries and utilize the language, it's the whole immersion process of it, which I heard is, you know, great for them, that scares me, so I couldn't support it.
I would, just to back up, I'll try to speak quickly and not take up too much time. We did have AFAS students in the West when I was a senior in high school from Australia, and our families are still wonderful friends. It was a year-long experience, so she was here for an entire year with our family, and it was wonderful, it was great, everything worked out beautifully. I think for a lot of kids, when they take these trips to Costa Rica or wherever it is, it's their first trip abroad. My daughter went on a band trip to Italy, and it was her first trip abroad, and I would never have let her go if it was an immersion trip. It was, in this case, it was with the band, with a bunch of kids that she knew, four kids to a room, you know, they loved the culture, it was a wonderful, wonderful trip, and I just, you know, I just, I have the same angst that I would, if I were to vote on this, I would not want to spoil the immersion portion of it where they're staying in somebody's houses, I just, I just don't feel good about that, I don't think it's a good thing for us. I mean, if it was done outside the district, okay, that's fine, but I do think parents, if it says Cedarburg School District, they assume it's a pretty safe thing, and I don't know if it's often 99% of the time, I'm sure it's fine, Jason, and I totally trust you with the kid. I just don't know that next step, and to hand them off to those other families, I just worry about that, and I would, if I were to vote, I would say no, I wouldn't support that, just because of the immersion portion, not the trip itself, just that they're outside of your direct control.
Well, it's hard to, you know, argue with what any of these guys say, but I would disagree. I'd say take the trip, you know, as long as the parents know everything about the trip moving forward, just my take. I just decided, you know, I'm not going to live my life, you know, with the 99%, with all due respect, I mean, I agree with you, but there's a 1% chance of getting hit by a bus tomorrow, you know? So there are no guarantees, it seems like a great opportunity, that's just my take. So I just want to share that.
I'm not sitting next to you thinking about thoughts. This is why backed up. We chatted all the whole after the curriculum meeting, I mean, you know, I trust you. That was one of my thoughts coming into this is, could you split the trip and just go and, you know, split the family or just turn it off? If you do go, there was a point made at the curriculum meeting, it was all about finding a parent, I think we just take that. The other piece, if you do go, would be make sure clear, and I know you've talked about it, or thought about it, communication with the kids on a daily basis. The other part would be the contract, would you sign a contract, or the, you would, the district would sign a contract with this travel organization?
Oh, I don't know that the district would have to sign a contract with the organization. Students sign code of conduct, parents sign a waiver through ISE, I brought up the idea of...
That's what I was looking for, was a waiver.
Yeah.
And whenever I, you know, what I do, like Rick, whenever I see waiver, I'm like, okay, they will have all the responsibility. And so that's a big issue with me, that's what I was going to point out, is if you do go, you know, I do, like Mark and I already said, but I have concerns with the background checks and with the families. I think the trip itself, up until then, you know, where you're in control and you're with them, and you're constantly responsible and they're with you, I think that's good. I always, that last year, that response that Rick referred to, I don't think he had a lot of last name, the rest of the board that was involved, I won't forget that response, it was pretty much in your face, and I have a hard time with this organization because of that piece of it, so that's one piece that's Jason.
Sure. And I apologize on behalf of them if it came off in that way, I mean, no way Shelly did I have to be like that.
It's not you, it's them.
Yeah, but you know, I, I've worked with them for many years, and I feel that, you know, I agree with that too, so I do feel some responsibility for that.
Would I ask if we just find out what Jeff decides to do, that we can somehow, or send an email or anything?
Absolutely. We'll take this feedback, we'll process it and we'll straighten it. Any other comments, and then we'll, we'll let you know what the, what the direction is, any other suggestions?
I think you made the comment, I'm going through this same scenario with my daughter, there's holes in the vertical serena. So all the questions that we have asked, I've asked as well. And I'm fairly convinced that the vetting process that the organization uses is just as good, if not better, than an actual background check that would be conducted in a foreign country. That, 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 that is, that was my measure, I'm just sharing, I had the same concern, my daughter's a bit younger than I used to be, and so I wanted to make certain that, I thought the truth was apparent, so I pushed on pretty heavily because of the conversation we're having here, I wanted to know exactly what the process was. And it's similar to all, it's a similar protocol for all these businesses who run these overseas trips, if the standard is, is the same.
If they have one, if they have one issue, they're done. I mean, they got a lot to lose if they have an issue, I mean, it doesn't guarantee anything, I realize that, but they got that a lot, so.
Rick, any other comments?
You know, thank you for taking the heat from us, but you know, we are concerned as you are, but thank you for going through it.
And thank you guys again for hearing me out.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Well, talk to bosses.
All right.
Thank you all too for sitting around.
All right, AF membership, are they carrying?
As discussed at the June 11 PNF meeting, the state superintendent is required to annually select 25% of school districts to have membership audits. Cedarburg was selected for the 13th, 14th school year, this current school year, and our round membership audit was in the 2010 alumni school year. The district auditor, Riley, Karen, and Bethany, found our comps to be in agreement with the criteria established by the Department of Public Instruction. The three membership counts audited and reports provided to you are for the September 2013 audit, membership count, the January 2014 membership count, and the summer school 2013. These comps are used for both revenue and equalization aid calculations. The only difference reported by the auditors is a decrease of one in the September count and additional three in the January count. This is not an audit font error, but simply student changes reported by the district to DPI after the reports are due. I'd like to thank Mary Ann Luenhouse, the district accountant, who reports all counts and changes to DPI in an accurate and timely manner. The report attached to the memo is reported to, is provided to you from your auditor's and gets information all night. Are there any questions?
No, but since it wasn't, it was awful little in our favor, do we get some more money from the state?
We actually already reported, did that, so we have money already.
Okay. You have to give a dollar out there. May I actually ask, Rick, if you're off by 33, 34 students every year, what happens to the money that you got up from it? Karen said you have to return it to somebody. Better be accurate.
Thank you, Karen.
I would like to make a motion to accept the audit.
We'll do that.
You can do it. Even better. All right. And G, Karen, budget amendments.
It is recommended the board approve the 2013, 14 budget amendments. These amendments were also reviewed in detail by the personnel finance committee last Wednesday. Wisconsin statute requires a budget publication anytime and along appropriation changes. The amendment requires a class one notice within 10 days of school board approval, and this will be posted after two weeks' meeting. The main purpose of the budget amendment is to reflect grant allocations and donations that were unknown in October, and to reflect proper accounting consistent with rules set forth by the Department of Public Instruction. On the fiscal impact of the memo, the general fund increases and decreases our duty various grant changes, an increase in our library of $2,703, and two major account code changes. The first one is substitute costs, we changed to teachers on call this year, the district no longer pays, but the vendor pays then, so the change was from instructional accounts for teachers to program accounts, and for our support services, our $200,000 function, to again, the program transactions for $20,000. The second change was for our learning initiative expenditures. In October, I had quoted them to support services and had now changed them to instruction. This better reflects the intent of the running internship project. The second set is donations, which are in Fund 21, and this is simply to record the general donations received throughout the school year. The fund balance, there's a small fund balance in this, and this is for donations that were received late this school year that will be expended at the beginning of the next school year. And then finally, the changes in the special projects fund for special education, and this is made due to grants and again, transferring some of our substitutes. The attachment to this is the actual amendment, and it reflects only change, only the accounts that are changed. And if you go to the bottom line of each section, you can see in Fund 10, there's zero change to fund balance, so it's simply moving from expenditure to expenditure, or adding expenditure and adding the offset setting revenue. The second section is the Fund 21, the donations, that's what I spoke of, so there's $11,000 in that fund balance, and then finally, special education, again, just changed to expenditure to expenditure. And then finally, special education, again, just changed to expenditure to expenditure. Are there any questions?
Mr. President, I move approval of this.
Motion in the second and discussion?
I have reviewed this quite extensively, and if I may describe it as such, Karen, this is basically housekeeping things. There is no material fiscal impact here, it's basically moving money to recognize the reality to where we are today versus what we were doing before.
Any further discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. And A, Karen, CPAC contract.
It is recommended the board approve the twenty-fourteen performing art center facility use agreement. This tool was presented at Personnel Finance Committee. Captain Costa, the CPAC coordinator, was there to present the information and answer questions, including in your back, it was a copy of the contract, and the changes were highlighted in yellow. And the only changes are to the dates on page one and to the name of the superintendent on pages four, nine, and ten. Are there any questions?
Motion in favor? Okay. Motion in second, all of the favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Karen, CISA One contract.
It is recommended the board approve the twenty-fourteen CISA One service contract. The services, these services were also reviewed in detail with the Personnel Finance Committee. The district utilizes resources offered by CISA One to maximize and sustain quality educational programs. The twenty-fourteen, fifteen contract totals one hundred eighty-five thousand to eighty-five, which is a decrease of seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven from the current school year. This is mainly due to the elimination of a deaf and hard appearing teacher through CISA and then entering into a cooperative with MECLAM that was approved at the last board meeting to share a teacher with them. This makes the net savings for this teacher thirty-eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars and a net budget savings of thirty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars. Attached to the memo is the budget comparison summary, which we discussed in detail. The top section looks at the costs compared to last year, and the second section looks at the increases from CISA in each of these costs. The second attachment is a summary sheet that lists all the services that are included in the contract, and then the last item is the actual contract with CISA that, after approval, the board looks at online. Are there any questions?
Karen, obviously, and I don't want to put you on the spot because you never prepared for this, but I'm really anyways, because you always like, you know, like... These dollar amounts, we had to hire full-time employees for all of these services. All part, how much are we saving? Because you would be doing it if we weren't saving money. So how much are we saving by, I mean, and you have the tab you had? It doesn't have to be exact, just somewhere in it.
I'll cut it a little down, let's just look at teacher for blind and visually impaired. That's only, that's not even a full salary, and that doesn't include benefits.
All right, that's when we start adding, you know, bond care and everything else.
Right, I would say it's probably over a hundred thousand dollars.
We're saving over a hundred. Thank you.
With that in mind, say big tax break, I'll move that along with it. I thought it was a... Motion in second, any further discussion? Yeah, I think Jeff was first, Karen the second. All of the favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Food service contract, Karen.
These came in. Did we get key to the kitchen doors?
The board is asked to approve Airmark Education to provide the district's food service program. The contract will be for a one-year period beginning July first, twenty-fourteen, and subject to annual renewals for an additional four years. As outlined at the P and F meeting last Wednesday, school districts contracting with a food service management company and participating in the national school lunch program are required to bid their contracts every five years. A formal proposal is created and approved by D P I is required. The proposal was then sent to five vendors, along with a required posting in the newspaper. A mandatory pre-bid meeting was held and two vendors attended. The vendors were then required to bid on a fixed meal rate. The rate we see from Airmark is two-point-five-four-eight-six, which is a slight decrease from the current rate of two cents. We are excited to continue our relationship with Airmark, and we look forward to working with Brian Mann, who's a new acquaintance here with us tonight, and he will continue to serve as our food service director, and this will be his third year. He has been a positive influence for the district and the program as a whole. After approval this evening, I will meet with Brian and our new regional manager, Mayor Joe McLaughlin, to discuss plans for the upcoming year and long-term planning. If you recall, Airmark presented at a P and F meeting in March and then we presented to the board, and this year we will begin participation in direct diversion processing program. And this process will be sending bulk raw U S A foods directly to our selected processors and who will create the finished end product. And this will allow us to serve more variety and higher quality products. We will also examine any grants or other opportunities provided by D P I, such as fresh fruits and vegetable programs, and also the farm-to-school efforts that originally produced foods to school campuses.
And the proposal that they made, it also seems like they want to work as a vendor with the diversion program.
They have, they have all the vendors in there.
Marty, veggie guys.
So who are you?
I'm just...
You know, something would be a good idea for us just throughout the year, have a little lunch at some elementary schools, seriously, just give it a shot. I think it might be a good idea, just test the waters there.
At the back of the line.
I'll buy.
I'm glad to see Airmark won the pricing. I was very impressed with their presentation, the direct diversion program, it sounded very interesting, really good for our students, we talked about all its best students, it really seemed like a better system than the current. And a lower rate, it's, you know, win-win, it's an easy vote for me.
And the kid, Mary, got a great guess, adds to the...
I'll move to approve the food service management contract with Airmark from fourteen, fifteen.
Second. Motion in second, all of the favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. All right, Kristen.
You have according the CISA Six contract, that's a yearly signing about participation of the social. The services that we are contracting with CISA for is on the listing at our website. This is the seventh year that we will continue to host with CISA Six. They have been competitive over the years, and we're continuing in the contract for our e-rate funding, we didn't talk about it again. Looking at the changes and things that we're introducing to the staff, to introduce a new website at this point, and the changes in our staff, we didn't think that this would be the best interest. We had been able to sign on with them for a, we designed our website last year at a very reduced rate because they wanted to use us as a, as some kind of, how they want to use their new project management software, and we're moving forward with that, and new website design being unveiled in the coming months. Any questions?
I do see it's a lower rate than we had last year, to about a hundred and sixty dollars lower.
We continue to monitor the things that we store out on our web server, we'll see, because it is a high-priced hosting of data. And so with the advent of our Google Ads and things, we choose to post many documents in Google Drive and then link to them there, so it's a much more efficient way of serving those documents.
Were there any changes in the, I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, that was...
I'm sorry. Were there any changes in the contract itself, other than the dates?
Nothing.
Anything changed?
Just our, on the contract itself, no, just the price, because we're using less data storage.
Just contract language?
Yep, no, nothing. If you notice, the contract does look like it is quite big in this one, I can notice. It's the same one for years and years, yes.
All right, we're only locked in for a year, then, so it's something changes or it's technology, so.
Yes.
I have a little bit.
Have a motion?
Someone in the audience asked for a class. Thirty-two ninety, three thousand two hundred and eight.
All right. Mm-hmm. Have a motion? All second. Motion in second, any discussion? Any more questions on that, I don't think we're... Okay. All of the favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. And... Thank you. Board policy validated service?
Joe, go ahead, take that.
At the April Policy Committee of War, we discussed policy services. We had information and talked about the O L A services that would be very effective for us teams, very efficient for us teams. We are proposing or looking to contract with the O L A for policy development, posting those policies to our website and annual reviews. We'll see some information in there on the administrative rules, and want to make sure we have the administrative rules controlled locally and developed.
And just to clarify, it doesn't prevent us from not following the template from the annual group meetings? It's a little very hot.
Absolutely, it will be local flavor to all of our policies.
Motion? Second. Motion in second, all of the favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. All right. Item M, protect...
First one is year-end professional development review. We just finished three great professional development days, just wanted to give an overview of the kind of activities the teacher were involved in.
Thank you, John. As far as you can see, because everyone has their hand up, it's titled professional development interview, June twelfth through seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. We have had three days of PD, one of the days was a professional record day, June thirteenth, June sixteenth, and June seventeenth, they're all professional development days. And the first thing that jumps out at you when you look at this is that there's a lot of activity out there, and I'd say that's a good thing. Historically, you've heard from teachers, and I as a teacher was initiated, was not happy with a one-size-fits-all professional development. For everybody, you pull them into, you know, organic, and then you hear that it wasn't very meaningful for me as a teacher in my respective area. What you see on this document is that it's really differentiated professional development. It ranges from my learning plan, which everyone was trained on across the district, which is interested in the evaluation system from CISA Six that we are participating in, and will be formally affiliated come the fall. You can see there's things regarding data presentation and active middle school, looking at how best to meet the needs of our students, using the need currently has in the district. There's a scheduling discussion at the high school, curriculum assessment work, working on our building on curriculum, future teach, Kristen and I, teachers yesterday for the wrap-up from this year and the kickoff for next year, future teach two-point-oh. Rachel Yurk, our new instructional technology specialist, was part of that as well. And you can also see that the learning initiative, which is on June seventeenth, which was today, fifty-six thirty teachers, all of them were present today, and Rachel and Kristen spent an entire day with them preparing for the long, long promos that fifth grade currently has, and sixth grade will have next year. So we're starting to be ready to change the instructional practices, what does instruction look like, and what will learning look like now that we have these devices in the hands of students. And they're going to meet again tomorrow and Thursday, and you'll have additional due on Friday. And lastly, I'll just point out that on that June seventeenth, the last bullet there, you can see the A and B M art and music of the D P I was here today and actually was presenting and working with music art teachers. Now, if you can see, they're from their own metropolitan area, student learning objectives, which are similar to SMART goals, that they will need to develop under the new evaluation system. So it's a wide array of activities that we've had over the last few days, and the initial response from administration, the few teachers I've spoken to, is that it's been well-received.
I'm sure the, you know, the content and everything's really well-received, I'm just wondering if it's ever been looked at, that, you know, you have some meetings immediately after school, and then, you know, it started in August, and had some of these professional development days. I mean, timing-wise, does it make sense to have it right after? I mean, I was just, I was at my house, and we had over my son's entire first grade class immediately after school for three hours.
He still does.
And a couple other kids, and I was just thinking, wow, they just got done with this, and they're going to be doing this tomorrow. Just, I don't know, the timing-wise, or if it makes sense to do it right after school? Have they kind of already gotten into summer mode?
Have they checked out?
Have they checked out? I mean, can you get together, what have we learned, what should we go, what can we, you know, target next year, and then maybe not, you know, get into all this training that they'll have to, you know, not use for another, you know, two or three months.
That's a, that's a great question, and many of these topics are drawing upon things that they've done, worked on during the school year, so it's kind of wrapping up reflection, and also front-loading some of the information that they need for next year, and we'll have refreshers and touch base on many of these topics from fall and August. So it's kind of a one-two kind of punch, if you will. And many of these topics, the teacher wanting information on it and need, and will spend time over the summer reflecting and preparing for next year. And we have to choose our content very carefully, you absolutely right, so you certainly want to go heavy with them, because then it's stuff that we lost over the summer. So, you know, it's really drawing upon some of the topics we've discussed during the year, needing a bit deeper reflecting and front-loading for next year.
So our AP students, they get homework, get creative, the teachers are the same, so we can tell what these teachers are doing.
Doing the same thing, absolutely. And it is true, you know, summer isn't time for, and we expect our teachers to be rejuvenated and ready for next year, and many of them had initially, like I did, after a few weeks off, you're going to diagnose some of this just because you want to, you have very conscientious educators, and they're ready to go in fall, so many of these topics, they don't have a lot of this.
You're taking it two weeks off?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just, you know, an example.
Check though. Almost got you.
The last night, paper of reflective performance discussion will be on July eighth at six o'clock, it's a public meeting, anyone is interested in coming. This is a direct result of the fact that within fourteen days, a lot of the land changes in the state of Wisconsin in terms of evaluating teachers. And that is that teachers will be evaluated on their practice in the classroom, it'll be evaluated on their achievement of S O Ls, and half of their rating will be based on student outcomes. So that is the practice that was put in place in two thousand and ten, if I recall correctly, from our state superintendent, through two years later by the legislature, to enact in fourteen days. So teachers will be evaluated throughout the state, including Cedarburg, based on two models, either Teach-Scape or an equivalency model that we adopted and selected, because we could tailor it to our needs and our high expectations in Cedarburg, for our teachers to work in collaboration with them, as in my learning plan through CISA Six. So we're thrilled about that, and since the board initiated probably three years ago a performance system of pay for teachers, as opposed to the historic method of working an additional year and getting a pay change based on completing a year, this board of education made a decision that would be based on performance, what actually occurs in the classroom. And so as a result of that, the request was made by the board to take that system that we developed three years or so ago and enhance it, improve it to whatever extent would be appropriate for us, tailor it to our needs, to align it, if possible, with this new evaluation system, so that there's a seamless transition in terms of what happens in classrooms, what happens with students, and what happens with compensation. So that's the design that we'll be talking about, we look forward to the conversation, and we look forward to having a system. We look forward to conversation and we look forward to having a system that the teachers will be able to embrace and feel comfortable with, feel that it's fair, feel that it's transparent, and hit many of the expectations that they've laid out for us. So any questions about that?
I just have, I have a quick one, just to verify because of comments made earlier. The decision to evaluate teachers and the performance is a state mandate to us?
That, that is correct. And the superintendent is not evaluating every teacher. So.
What did I put aside for that? What did we have you for?
I don't think so. By state mandate, by state law, only administrators, certified administrators that in this, in this situation have been approved through the training program through either Teachgate or My Learning Plan can evaluate certified teachers in the state of Wisconsin. So it's principals, assistant principals, deans, et cetera, if we had those. So those are people that would be evaluated and is appropriate. You should look to me in terms of overseeing the entire system and its integrity, that it truly is reflective and it's consistent and it's fair across the district. That's a legitimate expectation of you and teachers. And, and we will, we will accomplish it. And, and on top of that, we will be a leader in terms of making this system work for kids, for our students, that it really does truly impact, have a positive impact on learning. And that, that's the ultimate goal of this system and, and we're committed to it. We had trainings, you can see, in professional development from the Apex in terms of My Learning Plan. Those sessions went incredibly well. Teachers are becoming more and more familiar and feeling so, like, my impression, always talking with several teachers, feeling so it really hits the mark in terms of being transparent, being understandable. This is a three-year window as we talked about. So we don't, we're not looking at this intensity over a one-year window. We're looking at trends, we're looking, we're looking at change, we're looking at improvements. And, and that resonates with, with our staff. So we look forward to that conversation.
So I just wanted to clarify because Thursday night, the superintendent cannot be with us. But we set that meeting date for Thursday, knowing he couldn't make the meeting that he wants to be at because otherwise he was going to push it off even further and we didn't think the citizens wanted to wait any longer to talk about the calendar. So I just wanted to make sure to clarify.
Can we ask questions now since superintendent?
In terms of new teacher rating, teacher will be rated minor training. Is that on the smarter balance assessment?
No.
Can you clarify what they'll be rated on?
As I said, they'll be rated on three, three standards, three rubrics. And that's teacher practice, what happens in the classroom, achievement of SLOs, and student outcomes. And those measurements are being, being discussed as we speak in terms of what would be appropriate.
What are SLOs? What did you say this second one was? Where is?
Student learning objectives.
Like an IEP?
So have SMART goals.
Yeah, it's a, it's a hybrid SMART goal.
So the student outcomes, is that based on smarter balance assessment and social?
No. Um, the answer is no. The, the answer is no. Smarter balance at this time is not being considered for consideration for assessment for student outcomes under the evaluation system.
A few years from now, that's a possibility. But the state basically said at this point, you can't use that data to be evaluating the student growth portion of the evaluation process.
Is that your call or is that the state's?
It's a DPI, that's states. There's a state law, state law says half of the evaluation has to come from student outcomes, but the state doesn't have a mechanism to do that yet. So there's kind of a void right now for at least three years, I think, is the latest that we've heard from the state.
Two thousand and seventeen.
So the smarter balance wouldn't come into play until then at the soonest. And it makes sense. They want to make sure that there's as much validity and reliability and consistency as possible before they use that kind of data.
I would say it could be a scary thing to just be dependent on the state. Not have to say yourself. Basically, why would a teacher teach anything more than what's on smarter balance assessment? Because they're going to be hurt by teaching something more that their kids do poorly on the smarter balance assessment.
That's only half of it. Only half. The other half is teacher practice. So there's plenty of other ways that we can locally make sure that we're getting quality starts.
Avoiding half, half.
But again, that's not a decision we can make.
We have to do.
I would encourage you to fight it.
Yeah.
Because you want to keep the teachers teaching more than they're taught for.
Sure.
You'd want to fight.
Who sets this SLOs?
Teachers and administrators work together.
The administrators that have gone through training from the state? Who's providing the training?
We're going through CISA six because we're doing My Learning Plan.
CISA six?
There's two options, through DPI, Teachgate training is provided. And if you're going with CISA six, then it's My Learning Plan is the program that you're training through CISA six.
So the first one, DPI, was Milwaukee Madison? And then all of North Shore pretty much went with a different one other than what DPI was suggesting?
Yeah, I don't know the exact numbers. Most of the state's doing the Teachgate model, but CISA six, My Learning Plan's got a significant number of districts that have chosen that option.
It's the only other equipment.
Wait, are we talking about training for teachers or training for the administrators?
Both, both. You have to be certified to be an evaluator and the teachers obviously need training because it's a software package that they've never used before. We're all learning the software.
So that concludes the superintendent.
And just to be clear, the performance system that was brought up as well, that something was in place before Dr. Anderson was here and it was at the direction of the board for him to continue that implementation and continue that going on. So that's from, that comes from the board.
Of course. So under this new system, how are this, how are the administrators and superintendents evaluating?
It's under the same system, actually, as principal evaluation and a superintendent that's being developed as we speak.
So you evaluate yourself?
No, I'll evaluate. I would love to do that, actually. I'll have to send in that suggestion. No, the, actually, the board will ultimately evaluate me on that model and I'll be evaluating principals and other administrators.
And there will be confusion when you hear the acronym SLO because it actually stands for two different things. For teachers, it's student learning objective and for principals, it's a school learning objective. And for whatever reason, they didn't try and get creative and come up with a different label. So if you hear somebody say, well, it's the SLO is the school and they said at the meeting it's a student one, it's both. It just depends on the context that you're talking about. And right now, I think we're all more comfortable with the teacher process because I think that there's been less guidance and direction about what that school learning process, the principal evaluation process looks like. But this is all new and so we're learning it as we go. All right, first one, finance, Jeff?
I think we covered it. Actually, we did. We, we went through the budget amendments, went through the membership update, the cost of the budget, discussion, CISA contract, food service, CPAC contract. Like I said, we didn't talk for a lot of the days, XPF is July ninth, that's CISA five.
And now we will talk about the journey into executive session. Where's anticipated board of adjournment to executive session two?
Sure, you. Can I just, actually, we want to take M two.
Yes, I'm on.
Jump back. I should have done more to do something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, we did, sorry. It's our intra-district, I don't want to.
I don't want to throw away with that.
Through our board policy committees and our PNF meetings, we had a number of conversations around class size in the district. As a result of that, we really dug into what students do we have in our district and where are they designing. So do we have a number of kids in classes that are high as school roller high that are year under open enrollment? Do we have accurate residences, residencies for a number of students? And then do we have students where there is an agreement that's been made that has perhaps expired while they're attending a different elementary school? This week, we will be sending out approximately fifteen letters to families notifying them that they have to verify their address, that their elementary school may change if they are year under open enrollment and in a grade and if his school is high. Or families that they're going to be just on that phone meeting with me to verify again where they are living. It's come to our attention that we have some families that may not be living in our district and they may not be year under tuition waiver or open enrollment. So we'll be digging into that in July, investigating that in July and going forward from there.
All right, great. All right, now we execute the session. This is table review, effect of special minutes of May twenty, two thousand and fourteen, to consider two thousand and fourteen salary negotiations with Cedarburg Education Association pursuant to section nineteen point eight five one, even Wisconsin state statutes, consider evaluation data, specific personnel issues, and two thousand and fourteen, thirteen fourteen, I should say, paper of performance of public employees and administrators and support staff over which school board has jurisdiction or extra tax responsibility pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five. We see that we may, we will adjourn into open session where we will reconvene to discuss executive session minutes of May twenty and two thousand and fourteen salary negotiations with Cedarburg Education Association and associated salary adjustments for super, school district indicators, two thousand and fourteen paper of performance, adjustments for administrators, teachers, support in staff.
I'll move to agenda.
Have motion and second? All those in favor? Against?
Yes, definitely.